Over Street, over to the Baptist Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Our gracious heaven and father, we just want to thank you for this day and we ask you, Lord, in the name of Jesus now, be with our city council and not only that, they have a father, unify us in the city of Mobile. Lord, also remember those in Jacksonville, Alabama, they have a father, we thank you for there was no death, but Lord, we ask you, let us be committed to do one thing, serve you and bless you and honor you. We pray for the citizens of this city, they have a father, that they will be obedient, they have a father, and follow in all the rules and regulations, that we can all be unified in one body, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. In the name of Jesus.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to ask that you would continue standing for a moment of silence, all of our colleagues, Councilman Fred Richardson has had some bereavement in his family, his sister Dolores Richardson Davis passed in the city of Chicago, and I'm going to ask out of respect and deference to our colleague, that we would observe a moment of silence for Ms. Richardson Davis. Thank you.
Vrlo Cop, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory. Statement of rules.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're happy to have each and every one of you, we do have a few rules that we'd ask that you would observe. First, if you would silence all of your electronic communications. If you signed up for an agenda item today, you'll have five minutes to speak, at the ending of four minutes, you will hear a bell, that's the signal for you to begin to conclude your remarks at the ringing of the second bell, that's the sign for you to be leaving the podium and returning expeditiously to your seat. We ask that there will be no public outcry, no unnecessary commentary. If you'd like to speak before the council on an item that's not on today's agenda, you ask to call the city clerk's office on a Thursday preceding the city council meeting you would want to speak at on that Tuesday before two o'clock, so that we can have your name and your issue properly vetted and added to the agenda. Thank you all for coming today, and we'll back in the hands of our city clerk.
Approval of minutes is March thirteenth. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Miss approved.
Communications from the mayor's office.
Nothing here, thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals, we have a request for waiver of the noise ordinance on April fourteenth on Houston Street, May twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, Burtonwood Drive.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings, today is the public hearing to approve the application of Jack Green Senior doing business as Kingdom Builders Travel Service for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a motor coach service.
Is anyone here that'd like to add any commentary for this particular public hearing? Anyone who would like to speak? Then if not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Joe Adams.
No, it was going to be Adamo, but he's coming next week. I'm sorry you didn't get that message.
Ms. Little.
My name is Renan Little, my address is thirteen fifty-one Goodman Avenue, Mobile, Alabama, three six six oh five. Good morning, council members. My name is, again, Renan Little, I'm a member of the Connie Hudson Mobile Community Cert Senior Center. My purpose of being here today is to request funding to remove or modify the ill-placed median directly adjacent to the exit of the facility on Hillcrest Road, and create a safe zone in which to pull our vehicles while trying to merge into Hillcrest Road traffic going southbound to Gerby. Anybody familiar with Hillcrest Road knows the issue we have with speeding. It's horrible. I tried to provide you with a number of accidents at this location over the past three years, which I think is a matter of public record, but Mobile Police Department Records Division said I can only get that by subpoena, so I don't have that. The issues we have when turning left, trying to get out of this facility, is that you have to angle your car to get around the median and turn left, and you can't adequately pull your car out and get it out of traffic. I looked at the mission statement of the Hillcrest Road Access Management Fact Sheet, and it states, and I have to look at this to get it right, is to provide safe and efficient traffic mobility and provide reasonable access by closing or redesigning medians to permit specific movements to reduce conflict points on the roadway. This is not happening at that location. The current problem we have right now is that when you pull out, you are at risk of vehicle damage or personal injury damage due to accidents because of this ill-placed median. The residents at this senior center range in age from fifty-five to ninety-plus, many of them still drive, many of them have handicaps. As with other mature adults, as we age, our reflexes get a little slower, our visual acuity may be a little bit impaired. They're still qualified drivers, but these are external factors that need to be considered in a proposal of this type. Eight months ago, I started looking at this median and trying to decide what I could do to get it fixed, and in emails and conversations with a lot of people, I was told that this was a capital improvement program funding, and that all funding had been allocated for the year, and I needed to bring this issue to the city commission, which is why I'm here today. I know that there are many, many intersections in the city of Mobile that need repair, and I know it's a very difficult decision to prioritize which ones take precedence over others. So what I'm here today to ask for is that an estimate of funds required to modify or remove this median be prepared, so that we have a definitive cost in which to add to the budget of the capital improvements program. I know the budget deadline is fast approving, I've been involved in city and county budgets for a long time, and that's why I'm here today. I have an application on file with the city's office that has a hundred and fifty signatures from members of the senior facility that feel that this median being placed as it is creates a hardship for them as they try to navigate onto Hillcrest and towards Gerby Road. Just in summary, what we would like is that funds be allocated from the pay-as-you-go program with matching funds from the capital improvement program to modify or remove this and make it a safe zone where we can get out easily and navigate south to Gerby Road. We also ask that the trees that are there be removed and placed in another city site, and that there is a sign placed on southbound Hillcrest indicating that the center is ahead on your left, because it is easy to miss and requires a U-turn somewhere down the road. I do thank you for your time and consideration of this request, and I hope that we can find a viable solution to make this intersection a safer one for the city's city residents and the people that visit the center on a daily basis. Thank you again, have a great day.
If I might comment.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome.
I know we've spoken, and my office is meeting with all the different areas of the city in pulling together the budget for next year, and I have alerted them because I knew you were coming down to address this subject. And the senior center is probably one of the busiest city programs we have, I believe they average about three hundred to four hundred, sometimes five hundred people a day in and out of that facility. So fixing the median, making it appropriate, I do hope will be a priority for our traffic engineering department, but I will look to be pushing for that. We worked with Carriage Hills, if my colleagues will remember, they came down and they wanted their entry point when a commercial development came across, and the city was able to work with them. And so I'm really looking forward to this being done and modified, so that it is a safer entry point for everybody who utilizes it. And thank you for working with and networking with the other residents and citizens that come down and enjoy the programming at the center. So thank you so much.
And thank you for your help in getting this arranged for me.
And I will keep you posted.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Reggie Hill regarding Resolution twenty-one two zero five and two zero six.
I'm sorry, which ones? Clerk?
Twenty-one two zero five and twenty-one two zero six.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, to the administration in the absence of our mayor, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. I just have a few questions regarding twenty-one two zero five and two zero six. Mr. Chairman, what will these resources be utilized for specifically, and how will this improve public safety in the city of Mobile?
Well, I'm going to ask that Public Safety Director, Mr. James Barber, respond to your particular question.
The Ford Consulting is on, in the Jim Brandt Block contracts are to produce DVDs on the different programs, I think many of which you've already gotten copies of, but like the Second Chance Program, Bridging the Gap Program, heroin prevention programs. This year, they're actually be working on some different DVDs on the recruitment of police officers and firefighters for both fire service and police department.
Can you speak more specifically on how it will improve, well, Mr. Chairman, how it will improve public safety within the community, particularly for the amount of resources that have been allocated towards the project?
Mr. Director?
These programs are in our school system, we begin with the You Have a Choice Program in the middle school system, it also goes into the high schools with the Bridging the Gap Program with the ninth graders. The recruitment is pretty much right on, I mean, we have a difficult time recruiting in the public service, and so being able to have a good selection of qualified recruits for both police and fire is what this particular contract is for.
Mr. Chairman, how many volumes of the material will be produced with the resources that are being allocated?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
How many volumes of the material will be produced with the resources being allocated?
Mr. Director?
Most of it will be online on the sites, we will be doing PSAs that'll go to the different news stations as well as movie theaters on the recruitment side, as far as hard copy DVDs, depends on the demand, but I know when the You Have a Choice Program, there were up to three or four thousand DVDs that were created.
Okay, and my final question, Mr. Chairman, are these resources allotted from the public safety budget, or, and if not, by what means are they being provided?
Mr. Director?
They'll come out of both police budget and fire department budgets.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to just acknowledge the presence of our Mobile County Assistant Super, Mobile County School Board Assistant Superintendent Dr. Linda Carroll is in our audience today.
All right, Dr. Carroll, and sitting next to her is the communications and marketing guru, Ms. Renee Hamner Phillips, I've worked with both of them extensively, both very highly appreciated ladies, thank you all for being here.
Resolutions held over, twenty-one one eighty-five authorized contract with Walters Controls for Mobile Museum of Art and Public Safety Complex. So moved. Controls.
Any questions? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Twenty-one one eighty-six authorized appropriation contract with Mobile County Commission to transfer funds to the city of Mobile's micro enterprise loan program.
So moved. Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Twenty-one one eighty-seven authorized contract with Chris Brewer Contracting for Fire Station Number fourteen, driveway April.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Twenty-one one eighty-eight authorized contract with Thompson Engineering for Mobile, Alabama, Cruise Terminal New Mooring Bowler. So moved.
Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, thirty zero zero seven.
Motion for suspension of rules for media consideration of ordinance three oh oh seven.
So moved.
Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? We see Ms. Elizabeth Stevens and Ms. Tara Hunter letting us know she, they want us to free the bubbles, and I believe that's what we're about to do. Again, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Excuse me. I haven't read it yet.
Got to read it out.
We're just waving the words.
Oh, my fault, I'm trying to speed the process up. I'm so sorry, pardon me, ma'am superintendent. Madam, City Clerk.
Thirty zero zero seven amend section thirty-eight of the Mobile City Code to allow for the suspension of bubbles, sale of alcohol beverages on Sunday commencement at ten AM.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
The bubbles are freed. Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero-three one ninety through sixty-two zero three.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for media consideration of resolutions zero-three one ninety through sixty-two oh three with the exception of thirty-seven one ninety-four and one ninety-five.
Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
If there's no objection, I'll take the appointments, reappointments together. Thirty-one ninety, one ninety-one, one ninety-two, and one ninety-three are appointing Vickery Jones to the Police Citizens Community Relations Advisory Council, reappoint Patricia Eddington to the History Museum of Mobile Board, reappoint Frederick Moore, Greg Hearn, and Stuart Brooks to the Electrical Examiners Board, and reappoint Frank McMillian to the City of Mobile Citizens' Budget and Finance Advisory Committee.
So moved. Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
Twenty-one two one zero authorized contract with Asphalt Services for twenty eighteen CIP Sidewalk Repair Maintenance. So moved.
Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
If there's no objection, I'll take the next ones, liquor licenses together, thirty-seven one ninety-six and one ninety-seven recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class two package store license for A-one liquor on Spring Hill Avenue, and recommend an approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Villa Del Ray on Schillingale Road South. So moved.
Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
Take the next ones together, fifty-eight one ninety-eight, one ninety-nine, fifty-eight two hundred, two oh one. Add Dodge Figures and Sons to the list of private contractors to abate properties declared public nuisances, declare weeds noxious group fifteen seventy-eight, assess cost for removal of weeds group fifteen seventy, and authorize removal of weeds group fifteen seventy-seven.
So moved. Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed. Item's passed.
Take the next two together, sixty-two zero two and two zero three, approve of award of special bonus to the firefighter of the month as part of the mayor's incentive program, and approve award of special bonus to officer of the month as part of the mayor's incentive program.
So moved. Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
CIP resolution's being introduced for the first time, twenty-one two zero four.
Motion for the suspension of the rules for media consideration of resolutions to twenty-one two oh four.
Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
Twenty-one two zero four authorized contract with Sunset Contracting for a lake drive Tricentennial Park kayak launch.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. This resolution has also to do with the Three Mile Creek Trail that's going to go, it's going to be a fourteen mile long trail right now. The greenway is coming through Tricentennial Park and is going westward over towards Stanton Road, it's almost completed, what we're trying to do now, we're trying to make it possible for citizens to access Three Mile Creek. We want a launch where they can put their kayaks and canoes into Three Mile Creek. We want Three Mile Creek to be footy, recreational, we want the people to be able to eat their fish, not only catch the fish, but we want them to eat the fish, we want them to use that creek for whatever recreational purposes that they see fit, and that's going to speed up the great day that all of Three Mile Creek would be recreational, and let it be said that it's going to begin at Tricentennial Park in District One.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
Resolution's being introduced for the first time, twenty-one two zero five through thirty-seven two zero eight.
Said resolution will lay off for one week by council rules.
Call for public hearings, forty-one two zero nine, call for public hearing to approve the application of Mallory Reed doing business as its party, time for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a shuttle service scheduled April third. So moved.
Second.
Prompt motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public meeting is called.
Announcements.
We're going to start today with Mrs. Rich.
Oh, thank you so much. I'll start off by asking if the administration would be so kind as to ask the traffic engineering department to look at some ballpark estimates for doing some remodification at the busy center on Hillcrest, the Connie Hudson Senior Center, so that my office can be aware of what we would be talking about, the engineering and the construction, for looking at that as an isolated construction project. And speaking of the Connie Hudson Senior Center, we'll be meeting out there as an open house for citizens on the corridor from Greelock to Cottage Hill to look at the Hillcrest Access Management Plans. You'll have an opportunity to ask questions, because there'll be people there from civil engineering, from traffic engineering, and also from the consultants that actually drafted and drew the plans. You'll be able to leave comments, we'll have a comment sheet, and you can also take them to neighbors that missed, that, there is a link, I will put this in the newsletter that I send out, if you'd like the newsletter, please contact my office. Again, this meeting is this Thursday, March twenty-second, from five to seven thirty, and there is a link to the city's website that then directs you to three different sections along this corridor, and there have been postcards, and you should have gotten a postcard if you live in a neighborhood that accents it in that corridor, and also have a business fronting. So we appreciate your input and also your understanding of what the plans are going to look like and would be moving towards construction, so we want that feedback. And I look forward to a really good crowd coming out for that time span this Thursday at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, thirty-two oh one Hillcrest Road, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rich, and Mr. Small.
Thank you, brother chairman. Last week, Councilman Richardson and myself had got a chance to attend the National League of Cities in Washington DC. Many topics was discussed during the week of the National League of Cities. We got together and talked about many items and topics such as rebuilding America, infrastructure, bridging the urban and rural economics to make it a key spiral, local and regional state economic growth, women leading the industries in the community, working together, benefits packages for city employees. But the most touching thing that was discussed was talking about handguns. Was talking to one representative from the state of California, and he was telling, I was telling him about gun violence in the city of Mobile, that so many guns are found with doors unlocked, and many juvenile or youth are going to pull up doors, open car doors where they are unlocking, stealing guns from the cars. This particular, if that the official from California states that stated that they had a state law dealing with guns locked, unlocked in the cars, and he went to telling me about their state law, so I got back to Mobile and I talked to our attorney, Mrs. Cochran, and I was asking her about the California state law. And just for instance, parts of the law reads that, you know, it's an ordinance that regulate the storage of handguns in unattended vehicles. It's an ordinance that had took effect in California in twenty sixteen. The ordinance also states that the purpose of it is for a vehicle that is unattended when a person who is unlawful carrying or transporting a handgun in a vehicle is not within close enough proximity to the vehicle to reasonably prevent unauthorized access to the vehicle or its contents. The purpose of the ordinance also is to keep plain view included in the areas of the vehicle that is visible by peering through the windows of the vehicle, including windows that are tenant with or without illumination. I was asking Mrs. Wonder if something that the council can do, she informed me that it was not, that the state law would not allow us, but the, our local delegation can do something in the state of Alabama. Talked to a couple representatives within our delegation, and it's something they're looking to carry on within the next session. The purpose of this is that it will keep the people that own the guns in their vehicle, will keep them, keep the guns locked up in their vehicles, and the fines that California have is like one thousand dollars. Also, you know, was reading a section last week where there was a child that turned around and shot his own sibling, and to me, the gun was unattended, and I believe that we should go further than just unattended cars, we should just, you know, look at something that's, you know, guns that's being unattended, period, you know, in the homes, in the cars, et cetera. Something that I hope that the, our local delegation will look at in the next session, and also I hope that probably can sit down with this council, I can sit down with this council, and also our attorney, and send up a resolution supporting, you know, locked guns in the cars, unlocked guns, excuse me, unlocked cars that have guns in their cars to hold the person that owns the gun responsible for having such negligence in having the guns in unlocked cars, or just really not having control of their own guns, period. And I think that's something that we need to do really as soon as possible, understanding that the session of, the session will be in really soon in Montgomery, so hopefully next year that this will be taken up upon. Also, I would like to remind the citizens of District Three that on next Tuesday, we will have our district meeting at the Maryvale Elementary School, which is located on Dolphin Island Parkway. Again, that will be on March the twenty-seventh at six o'clock PM, inviting all the citizens in District Three to please come out on next Tuesday at the Maryvale Elementary Inviting all the citizens in District Three to please come out on next Tuesday at the Maryvale Elementary School for our district-wide meeting. Also, on Saturday, March the thirty-first, we will have our sixth annual Easter egg hunt, uh which will be located at ten fifty Baltimore Street, Taylor Park. Um, this uh Easter egg hunt would take place at three o'clock PM. And the sponsors will be, of course, District Three, myself, and also Cumulus Broadcasting, inviting all the kids from two to twelve years old to come out on the thirty-first of March, which is the Saturday after next, at three o'clock PM at Taylor Park, to come out and have plenty of fun, Easter eggs, uh food, snacks, and also games. Again, that would be March the thirty-first at three o'clock PM at the Taylor Park, District Three's sixth annual Easter egg hunt. And remember that District Three is the place where things are happening. Thank you, brother chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Small, Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, sir. Uh, one week from today is the much anticipated District Five Community Meeting. It will be at Westminster Presbyterian Church, which is located at the corner of Sage Avenue and Airport Boulevard at six o'clock PM. We hope to have Mayor Stimson, uh Public Safety Director Barber, and Public Services Director Harkins all there. So again, that's uh one week from today, six o'clock PM, Westminster Presbyterian Church, Sage and Airport. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'd like to start off with my exciting announcements. I would like to start off by saying that the long and winding road uh that we've been on is gonna lead us to OSHA Road and Florida Street on Saturday, where that would be a grand opening of the new Publix grocery store. By the way, let me just say that they have taken a survey across this nation. Publix surfaced as the number one grocery chain in America. Beat out Trader Joe's. It is number one. So the number one grocery store is coming to District One. It is all fitting that that would happen. So I'm inviting all of the citizens to please join us Saturday, March the twenty-fourth at seven forty-five. And the reason we're gonna be early is because Publix wanna open up that store at eight o'clock. And they want the customers to be able to go in and shop. They wanna cut that ribbon and get it going. So I want you to be there, they're gonna have a, you know, a ceremony. But uh this is big, this is big. In in the midtown and east of our sixty-five, this is gonna be about the biggest event that we've had in a long time. I will be holding my Creighton Community Meeting at the Dumas Westland Center on Thursday, March the twenty-second, uh at six o'clock. And we're asking all our citizens in the Creighton community to please meet us at the Dumas Westland Center this coming Thursday. If you, if you, you probably can't read this, but I have a pen on. And I just wanna wanna mention this, is that I, you know, they talk about the failing schools in the city of Mobile, and there's seven in the city, nine in the county. Four of the failing schools are in District One. Well, I saw, I see what I could do is try to help this situation. When I was invited to be the Black History Speaker at LaFlore High School, and I wanted to, I took my opportunity to share then what a real failing school was like, because I went to one in the Neps, Neps, Alabama, where they had a two-room school that taught from the first through the ninth. And then they bused me over to a training school that wouldn't let me go to a high school. These were all failing schools. And my, my point to them was the reason I didn't fail, because I didn't quit. Can't no teacher fail you, can't nobody fail you. You fail when you quit. You just keep on going. So to encourage them not to quit, I published, I print, I had to print out four, uh seven hundred pens for the students at LaFlore. And these pens says, says, we will not fail. So this morning, the juniors at LaFlore uh was gonna take the ACT test, was gonna take the test this morning, the juniors. So I met the appropriate officials at LaFlore at seven-thirty this morning, so we could put a pen on every junior that says, we will not fail. But I have enough pens for all of the students and all of the teachers. So we, they may have been on the list the last time. We don't expect them to be on the list the next time. And we're gonna be doing all we can to encourage them to do the very best they can and don't let nobody talk them out of not being the best that they can. And then I wanna talk, talk a little bit about our trip to Washington, Washington. National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, May tenth through May fourth. And the Councilman Small and I had a great trip up there. First of all, we met with uh national leaders, were able to meet with Congressman Bradley Burns and Congressman Richard Shelby. We went on Capitol Hill uh where they were. Uh, Congressman Jones was in Alabama. We did not get a chance to meet with him. We met with some of his people, but he, he was not there, but we were, we were trying to meet with him. And I am on the National Transportation and Infrastructure Committee of the National League of Cities. And I attended uh our board meeting, turned out to be the largest and the most exciting board in NLC. We packed out to go get more chairs for this, for this committee because the focus came down to, like CJ says, it'll come down to gun violence, it's gonna come down to transportation and infrastructure. When we met with Senator Shelby, I was just moved about regarding the information he shared with us. You know that we, we cannot um take on any of the mega ships in our port because when the port needs to be dredged to allow us to accommodate those ships. It's a lot of ports across this nation that's not gonna be able to accept those mega ships. They are twice the size of a regular normal ship. So they dug a channel in Panama to allow those mega ships to enter into the Gulf of Mexico, but only those ports that's deep enough can take those ships. Senator Shelby has passed a law, the, the president proposed a law that to dredge a port, the state paid fifty percent, and the federal government will pay the other fifty. Well, the state didn't have the money to do that, so consequently, we don't have mega ships. Congressman, Senator Shelby passed a law, got a law passed that it would be seventy-five, twenty-five, that the federal government will pay seventy-five percent and the state will pay twenty-five. He's already met with the, with the governor, who says she can get the twenty-five percent that we need. So we can expect very soon to have our port dredged to allow us to access the mega ships. We are number eleven in the nation. And the day we start receiving the mega ships, we will instantly become number five in the nation. He went on to tell us that currently Mercedes is shipping its new vehicles out of Charleston to South Carolina. He has got enough money for the port. So those cars can be loaded off the trucks onto the ships. Right now, we don't have the apparatus to do that. So they are bypassing this to this port, they're going all the way to Charleston. He's gonna cut that out. He has the device, money to buy the device, so they can bust, can truck those ships to Mobile, load them up on the ships and ship them wherever they wanna go. So I, we are in for a great treat. And then in my committee, I met people that was on the Amtrak committee. Uh, these people had high position on that, on that board. And they, and I, I, my, my, my point to them, I wanted them to be my advocate to help us have Amtrak service from Tallahassee, Florida to New Orleans, Louisiana, so the Amtrak trains can stop in City Mobile. They told me they would advocate for me, they would start pushing for the Amtrak Trail. I guarantee you, if we can get the Amtrak to come through here, we will get the second cruise ship. People need to access our city by every means necessary. We don't have rail transportation. A lot of people, they can't drive, they don't, they don't intend to drive, they get up on that Amtrak, put them up at the ship, and keep on rolling. So I worked hard to try and get uh Amtrak into Mobile. And on gun violence, uh it was four things that they agreed that they want to. First of all, we don't have a federal handgun law. There's no law, the federal government, they don't have a law on handguns. The laws we have on handguns, they are state laws. They want the federal government to get involved in guns. First of all, they said they want background checks for the purchase of all guns. Okay, who you are, if you're gonna purchase a gun, you want a background check. Number two, they wanna stop gun, uh gun dealers from selling assault weapons all over this nation to people who uh with a deranged mind. If, if you have the money, you could buy the gun at the gun show. They wanna put an end to uh these gun dealers proliferating these guns all over the nation. And they believe that ought to be a national gun safety awareness program launched by the federal government. And they, they're gonna be pushing, pushing with that. And lastly, they said that any, any law passed governing guns in schools ought to apply to all schools. None of what they say is you can't take a gun in a public school. No, they won't, you can't take a gun in a public school, a private school, a parochial school, your own school, a no school. That any law pertaining to guns in schools ought to be for all schools. I don't care who owns it and who operated it. I agree with that one hundred percent. So, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. I really don't think that laws are gonna fix anything. And I think my colleague, Mr. Small and the gentleman from California have a right. It's a matter of personal responsibility. And where we can affect personal responsibility, I'm on board. I think that we can see from some laws in other states and cities that even the most regulated and and um overburdened laws in cities have not controlled our guns. But for a long time, I thought that people who lose a weapon, that's what I call them, uh my army experience. You have a personal responsibility that comes with the right to bear arms. And that ought to be enforced. Um, that's all my, of my platform. There's a lot of great things happening in Mobile, Alabama. We got everything from flower shows to car shows to bubbles in downtown. Somebody's on, there we go. So I would say that if there is a desire to have something to do this weekend, or any weekend, you need only look at our newsletters or log on to the, the website for the Downtown Mobile Alliance, and you can find out what's going on. And uh one of the highlights of the year on the campus of Providence Hospital is the Festival of Flowers, kicks off at nine o'clock on Thursday morning, and will run through five PM on Sunday. Events for kids, events for young people, uh they're trying to do all kind of things. Even in the evenings after the uh show closes, you can, you can buy tickets to some special events. And you need only Google Festival of Flowers, Mobile, Alabama. I don't always, uh, I don't normally do this, but I am going to brag a little bit. My um oldest was accepted to the Virginia Tech and College of Engineering.
All right.
And uh we are awfully excited about that, and uh banker's a little bit nervous, but uh I think we're all gonna get over it. Uh, but um hard work pays off. And this, this young guy who gets up before I do, and that is around four o'clock every morning, and has done it for the last four or five years, uh often gets labeled as the smart guy. But I say he's a hard-working guy, and his work is paying off. So congratulations to him. And um also want to wish my wife a happy birthday for this Thursday. I won't mention the number, but everybody knows she's much older than I am. Lastly, I um, I think it's neat to have um my friend Pastor Overstreet here with us today as I remind my colleagues that he and I will be down by the riverside. And we wish you all um to come and join us on Easter morning at seven AM in District Four. You simply have to go down Halls Mill Road to River De Sheen, turn south, and then follow the signs. It is a great day in Mobile, Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I wanna start by recognizing uh Mr. and Mrs. Afriktown, uh Mr. Cleon Jones and Miss Angela Jones. Glad to have uh such great people from our community in today's meeting. Uh, Mr. Jones known all over this nation, but I can respect that he came back to where he started. And he's not one, you got a lot of folks in the Afriktown community that do a lot of talking. Uh, he's one that will put his hand to the plow and get on a tractor, cut logs, limbs, he'll work, he'll outwork a twenty-year-old. And I respect that about him, I heart, uh he works in that community, his wife assists him in so many efforts. So I wanna say that publicly. Uh, I also wanna ask the administration, Mr. West, the administration. Uh, we live in the rainiest city in the United States of America. Other days, I was riding, because I'm not yet able to drive. I was driving, well, riding in the rain, saw two or three elderly ladies waiting at bus stops in the rain. I don't know whose responsibility it is, Waves or City Mobile, but I'd like us to look into installing covered stops, covered bus stops at all of our various bus stops. Our citizens should not have to sit in the rain, stand in the rain, to wait on a bus. And it may be what deters some people from riding. Uh, it may be the reason why some people don't go out to the, when they know that the weatherman is forecasting inclement weather, why they don't go out for uh shopping or things of that nature, because they know that their particular bus stop doesn't have a covered area for them to stand out. And so, again, I'm not knowing whose responsibility that is, but I'd like for you all to, to get some numbers behind it, work with Wave, however that works, and get them back to us to see if maybe we can address uh that very pressing problem, uh in my opinion. Uh, I wanna thank the citizens of District Two for your indulgence. Uh, I have not had a community meeting this year. Uh, I probably have more community meetings than anyone on this council, but I know that you all are aware, and I wanna make it public, that I have been somewhat sidetracked with some physical ailments relative to my knees. And uh, but I am recovering each and every day. And as soon as I can get to where I feel comfortable having those meetings, I will. In the meantime, I am still accessible. Uh, elements at CityMobile.com, I'm on Facebook, I'm on Nextdoor, I'm on Twitter, I'm on Instagram. They come to my house, they come to the church, my number's five zero nine four two three nine. I'm not running, I'm working for you in District Two. I wanna put that out there. That concludes my announcements. Any commentary from the administration?
No, sir, other than noting that spring happened twelve minutes ago.
Wonderful. Wonderful, here comes more rain.
That's correct.
Yes, sir. Uh, do I hear a motion from council? Second, probably motion, second, we adjourn all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.